Good morning, everybody. Sorry we're getting started just a few minutes late here. Welcome to the February 5th, 2024 Grants Pass City Council Workshop. We are starting off this morning with some interviews for our Budget Committee. And first, Sandy Novak. Welcome Sandy. So I have a few questions for you and then afterwards, the council may ask some follow-up questions.
Okay.
So the Budget Committee typically meets at least four times in May on Tuesday and Thursday evenings. Additionally, throughout the year, there may be a special meeting typically on a Wednesday at which your attendance could be beneficial. Are you able to make this time commitment?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a light at the base of the mic?
I just have a quiet voice.
And what prior work or volunteer experience have you had that would be beneficial if you were appointed to this position?
So I have years of experience auditing government entities and I am the County Finance Director and I put together the whole budget for the county.
Okay, thank you. And can you explain any experience you have in group processes and decision-making?
Something I do every day. That's why I was a little bit late. We were doing a little bit of that today with the county budget. Actually working together to figure out who's going to get limited resources and particular shares of them, et cetera. So you want examples of it or attitudes about it or what are you looking for?
Yeah, that'd be great.
All of it?
Yes.
So in communicating about especially limited resources, when you can sit down and talk about, you know, why does this particular group need more of the resources than this group and really making sure that everybody's understanding and then we can get the information to the decision-makers and make that very clear that this is a decision point that might be a little trickier and here's all the background to it and allow the proper decision-makers instead of the arm-wrestling behind the scenes, get that decision out there.
Thank you. And what do you feel is the greatest asset that you can bring to the Grants Pass Budget Committee?
I understand a municipal budget, which can be a little bit complicated to the average person.
And why are you interested in serving on the Budget Committee?
As a resident of Grants Pass, I'm, you know, I'm very interested in the process. I enjoy the process and to be able to do it for the city that I'm not as involved in as the county is just a little bit intriguing to get to step back and just look at it from that thousand-foot level instead of the granular level that I do every day with the county.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any follow-up questions? Valerie?
Hello Sandy. I'm going to ask you, what do you think is the most important financial issue facing the city and how do you think, how, do you have any ideas of how it's to be solved or?
No, I cannot solve that for you. That is for you guys, sorry. You know, obviously, law enforcement and making sure that you've got law enforcement right-sized within your budget and staying within your budget is always the tricky thing and how are you going to fund any gaps? Yep.
Does anybody else have any questions? Joel?
I was just wondering, in your experience as County Finance Director, what has been the biggest challenge to you and how did you handle it?
The biggest challenge is always limited resources and how to provide services when there isn't resources or when there's more than one group or department that has access to certain resources, how to divide those up.
Competing?
That's always tricky. Yeah, that's always very tricky.
Okay. Well, thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you for being here with us today. We should be making some decisions on Wednesday night this week and then we'll send you a letter letting you know either way whether or not you got selected and what the next steps are.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Have a nice afternoon. Are we waiting for our next candidate, Karen? Okay, let's take a five-minute break. Welcome back. We are interviewing our candidates for the Budget Committee and next up, I believe, we have Adriana Reinhardt. Welcome.
Hi, Mayor.
So I will ask you a few questions and then the council will follow up with any questions that they might have. The Budget Committee typically meets at least four times a month, excuse me, four times in May on Tuesday and Thursday nights. Additionally, throughout the year, there may be a special meeting typically on a Wednesday at which your attendance could be beneficial. Are you able to make this time commitment?
Yes.
And what prior work or volunteer experience have you had that could be helpful if you were appointed to this position?
Starting with my time at the Oregon Capitol, I worked for the Governor of Arizona.
Could you speak up a little bit?
Is that better?
Thank you.
I didn't know how close to get. I used to work for the Governor of Arizona in her office back when I was younger and we got to work on the state budget, starting with the governor's recommendation that she would put down to the legislature and then the legislature would put forth their recommendation to the governor and we would go back and forth until we were resolved. So that was a good one. And then I used to work at the Oregon Capitol, working on bills that affect the state budget. And then I've had experience in Washington DC with the federal budget. So I guess I haven't done a city budget, but I've done government budgets.
Thank you. And do you have experience in group processes or decision-making?
Yes.
Can you tell us about that?
Just the majority of my career involves working with other people collaboratively and making sure we can find a common ground that's sound and logical and, you know, at least the majority would agree with.
What is the greatest asset that you can bring to the City of Grants Pass Budget Committee?
I like to think my experience with the different levels of budgets I've done with the federal and the state, as well as I just really love tax law. I can talk to you guys all day long about tax law. It's my favorite area of the legal field. I'm a local attorney, so I'm really dedicated to the community, but I have a really in-depth training with tax and the way it works.
And why are you interested in serving on the Budget Committee?
I love financial planning. I love being wise with finances and I love the City of Grants Pass and it would just be such a great opportunity for me to work with you guys and help the community.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any additional questions? Valerie?
Yeah, thank you for applying. I appreciate qualified people stepping up to the plate. What is the most important financial issue facing the city and why do you think that's important? And do you see other financial issues facing our city and describe those?
Definitely. I know you guys were all here for the city funding for public safety, for firemen and women and our Grants Pass Police Department. So of course, that's forefront on my mind. And then, of course, I know we have other issues we're working through that you guys hear every day at your meetings, the housing crisis, our water issues. I love all of that and I'm happy to come and talk about it.
Anybody else have any questions? Go ahead, Rob.
So you've obviously read about some of the financial challenges with regards to public safety and so forth. What do you expect to find when you delve into the city finances with regards to public safety? Do you have any ideas?
To be completely honest with you guys, I expect to find a very little amount of money available.
Any other questions? All right. Thanks for being with us here and for applying. We will be making decisions on Wednesday night and get back to you either way. Thank you, guys. Have a good day. Have a good afternoon. All right. I think Karen has our next candidate. Hello, welcome. Are you Trip Android?
I am.
Welcome.
Nice to see you all again. It's been a while.
Thank you for applying for our Budget Committee. So I'll ask a few questions and then the council may have a couple of follow-up questions for you. Our Budget Committee typically meets at least four times in May on Tuesdays and Thursday nights. Additionally, throughout the year, there may be a special meeting typically on a Wednesday at which your attendance could be beneficial. Are you able to make this time commitment?
Yep.
Great. And what prior work or volunteer experience have you had that would be helpful if you were appointed to this position?
Well, I've served the past three years on the Budget Committee. I've attended all the meetings, even zooming in where I've had to when I've been called to Portland for work. Prior to my service on the Budget Committee, I served on the City-County Joint Economic Development Committee and I also serve on a couple of nonprofit boards and serve on the finance subcommittees of both of those nonprofits. And those are the Redwood Foundation for Education, which you probably all know formerly as the Josephine County Education Foundation, and then the Mount Ashland Association.
Thank you. Do you have experience in group processes and decision-making?
Yes. I mean, so as you saw in my resume, I'm a Financial Planning and Analysis Manager for Dutch Bros. The nature of that role is to serve kind of as a nexus of operations, back-office type work and administrative work, executive decision-making in finance and to provide the kind of joint bridge between all three of those functions and to provide a financial outlook about business decisions. So definitely have a wealth of experience participating in groups trying to reach a financial consensus and a financial outlook on something.
And what is the greatest asset that you can bring to the City of Grants Pass Budget Committee?
Quite frankly, I think it's both the fact that I am probably on the younger side of the city volunteer scheme and also I've been here my entire life. So I remember when Grants Pass had a population of less than 30,000. I was young enough there, went to high school in Grants Pass. Aside from college and graduate school, I've been here and lived here my entire life and went to see the community flourish. But I'm also kind of unique in being a younger educated person in that same circumstance.
And why would you like to serve on our Budget Committee again?
To continue the work we've been doing. The city obviously is under quite a bit of financial stress. I don't think anyone can deny that. And I would like to see that us managed through that stress and into a situation where we can free up the fiscal resources we need to grow, grow the community. Quite frankly, when we're struggling to afford basic goods and services and figure out more, maybe less struggling to afford them, but figuring out how we're going to finance them in the long term, we have no room left for anything else that could be devoted to our growth and I'm really passionate to make sure that there's a voice on the Budget Committee that is going to be coming from that perspective.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any additional questions? Rob?
Yeah, thanks for reapplying. So based on your, what you've seen and experienced in the past three years on the Budget Committee, what needs to be done to improve our budget process or Budget Committee or what outcomes would you like to see adjusted?
So just looking at the budget process and then looking at the output, I think the biggest, this is going to be tough, tough thing to hear, the biggest way to improve the budget process and make it happen more quickly after strategic planning and to have the strategic plan in the hands of the budget officer, budget members, not necessarily helping the council set the strategic plan, but understand what all the logic behind everything is so we can better evaluate the programming in there. So having that happen fast earlier in the year so then you can iterate, like, okay, here's the questions the Budget Committee has about how this strategic priority of the council is affordable. The May meeting schedule doesn't give you any time as a council to go back and reevaluate your strategic planning in light of the Budget Committee's concerns about affordability and about ending fund balances and all those kinds of things. The next biggest thing would be looking more than just basically two years out. Like I think I said in my application, the city's financial circumstances have been literally 20, 30 years in the making. Looking at cash flow, financial projections out that long of a term, I think would be good for bringing discipline and understanding, okay, the community, the drivers of the city's income, property taxes and fees here and there are really going to be set based on macroeconomic sort of circumstances. What does that look for affordability? Like what conversation are we going to be having 10 years from now as opposed to the next budget cycle? So looking not just at last fiscal year, this fiscal year, management's expectations of the current, coming, the fiscal year after the one we're approving, but 10, 15 years in the future would be a very healthy exercise.
Thank you. Valerie?
Well, I've always, I've asked this question of every candidate, but I feel having, you having been on the committee and been so involved with it, it doesn't necessarily, I think you nailed, you know what our financial issues are facing the city right now. And I think you just answered the question in terms of what can we do to make, to change some of the issues that we have and your input in to make that happen. So I did kind of hear a little bit of that and saw a little bit on your application in terms of looking long-term, but do you see anything, you know, that can help us in the short-term?
Certainly the policy decisions we make around how to close the financing gap, whether it's asking for additional property taxes, asking for a sales tax, asking for fees, those are all levers within the council's control. I think as a Budget Committee member, the real thing we can help there is asking the hard questions about, okay, what's, let me put this another way. I was kind of coming into this prepared, like, what would be something you would do if you wanted to vote down a budget? Like what would be something that would be brought to you as a Budget Committee member that would say, hey, no, actually, I'm voting against this one? And the number one thing in my mind would be, what if we don't have enough support for management's forecast for what a sales tax might bring in, if that's the direction the council wants to go? If there's just like a couple of slides and a few pages of backup here and there, we're going to raise this many millions of dollars with a sales tax? Like as a Budget Committee member, I would say, I want to see more support than that. Like I want to really know why you think that this amount of revenue is actually going to materialize. And I think that's something the committee members can do in the short-term is really press hard and really like, here are your options for financing. Here's what we need to see as support, like a reasonable estimate. And then the long-term, the problem basically boils down to, you know, property taxes can grow at 3% per year, but the cost of services grows at five to six and over time, all your revenues are going to be eaten away by that differential. How can we design public policy to generate the most revenue possible with the lowest tax rate, which is totally possible, I believe?
Thank you. Does anybody else have additional questions? All right. Thanks for reapplying and serving in the past. We will be making some decisions on Wednesday evening and getting back to you either way.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Waiting for our next candidate? All right, let's take a short break again.[1301.83] So let's have Danielle come in. and Sites Commission. We have a citizen-at-large position. This is Danielle Clara.
Hi.
Hi, thanks for being with us here today.
Sure.
So our process here is that I will ask you a few questions and then the council may ask some follow-up questions afterwards. Can you please tell us about what you know about the Historic Building and Sites Commission and how that works?
Well, what I know just from what I've heard about and done a little research online is that they focus on preserving the history of our town, the buildings, the feel, the look, and all that encompasses that, to keep a harmonious feel and preservation of our history here.
Thank you. And what experience or knowledge or perspective would you bring to the HBSC?
Well, just my love for architecture and historical towns and buildings in general. I live here in downtown, so in a historic, that's not a registered historic home, but it's a hundred-year-old home, so it's pretty historic. I just love everything about that. I love the whole look and the feel. I work downtown in a historic building. It's just part of my everyday life.
Thank you. What do you see as important issues of preservation that are confronting us over the next few years?
I think the biggest thing is merging growth with preservation, so growing the town, but also keeping it historically accurate.
And why are you interested in joining the HBSC?
Like I said, just the town history has just been always one of my favorite things to do. A friend of mine has been a part of it for a while, and it just sounds like something that I would really like to be a part of. So I said, well, when a seat came open, I decided to apply.
Great. What three adjectives would you use to describe your personality?
Let's see. I would say positive, outgoing. I am also objective.
All right, council, do you have any other questions? Valerie?
Yes, hello. Thank you for applying and getting involved. And I know you were, I met you at the DMO, at the roadmap, so thank you for taking that on too. That's great. How do you see the relationship between historic preservation and economic development?
I think it's important. I think that we can merge the two, you know, it's to bring something new, but also to keep the history alive, not to just, you know, knock things down or change things just for the fact of doing it because it's something new, but to find a way to meld it together so that it works for, you know, the common good.
Rick?
Thank you for applying.
Yeah.
Do you see there's room for improvements downtown for structures and signs and things like that?
Yes, I do. And like I said, I'm there every day, so there definitely can always be improvements. But like I said, within keeping of the context of the historical preservation of our town. So not to just put a big knee on signs, but, you know, to keep it cohesive.
Thank you.
Rob?
Yeah, I think I heard you say that you lived in a historic home, a hundred-year-old home. What section of town do you live in?
I live on Southwest K Street, and my house was built in 1920.
Nice, thanks.
Craftsman-style home.
Any other questions? Is there anything else you'd like to tell us about your interest in the HBSC?
Other than what I've already said, that's just something that I'd find very interesting and would be fun to be a part of.
Great, thank you. We will be making our decisions about committees on Wednesday evening, and we will get back to you either way.
All right.
So thank you and have a good afternoon.
Thank you, you too.
Okay, all right, we will jump back to the budget committee applications then. We have Robert Broseus with us. Robert, if you could please step up to the microphone here. Thank you for applying for our budget committee. The committee typically meets at least four times in May on Tuesday and Thursday evenings, and throughout the year, you may be asked to attend special meetings typically on a Wednesday, at which your attendance could be beneficial. Are you able to make that time commitment?
I am.
Thank you. What prior work or voluntary experience have you had that would be helpful if you were appointed to this position?
Well, I have been on the board of directors for-
Can you make sure to speak into the mic?
I've been on the board of directors for two homeowners' associations, and I have selected the treasurer position in both of those entities. I worked as the treasurer and president of my local fraternity 62 years ago, when I was going to college. I enjoy accounting. I became a certified public accountant. I did that for a number of years. None of my clients presently require audit work, so I allowed my license to practice accountancy to go inactive, but I maintain my license to practice law in the state of California in order to keep my tax practice going. So I do, I have a small tax practice that keeps me busy from January to April 15th, but for the rest of the time, I'm pretty free.
More time after April, huh? All right. What experience do you have in group processes and decision-making?
Well, as I said, I've sat on the board of directors for two homeowners' associations, so I have some familiar with, familiarity with that. Part of becoming a certified public accountant is getting involved in internal control to assess corporations and their ability to handle their funds safely. So I have some information on that. I'm proficient in a number of accounting systems and proficient in Excel. So I think I've got some things that I can contribute.
And I guess that leads us into our next question. What is the greatest asset you can bring to the city of Grants Pass Budget Committee?
Familiarity with accounting.
And why are you interested in serving on our budget committee?
Well, I've read a whole bunch of articles lately in The Courier, which indicates that budgeting is pretty important to the people of this town. And there are certainly a lot of people who have views about what you guys are doing. So I thought it would be a good idea to get more involved.
Thank you. Does anyone else have questions? Valerie?
Well, I think you probably just kind of answered it, but I'm going to put it out there to you anyway. What is the most important financial issue facing our city? Why is that important? And do you see other financial issues facing our city that you think are important?
Well, I think the biggest thing that I'm concerned about is you've got a water and power plant that you're replacing, and I'm concerned particularly about that. Budgeting is one of those things that you have to take pretty seriously. And you're talking about a lot of money and potentially displacing some people. So I think that's one of the big things. But lately, your budget committee is looking at how do you raise the funds that you need to do what you want to do? And I'm interested to find out how that works.
Does anybody else have any questions? Joel?
I was just wondering, what are the differences between budgeting, if any, in the private sector and the public sector? And what are the similarities? And how do you feel about it?
Well, in the public sector, you've got a whole lot more people involved and interested in what's going on. Private sector is pretty straightforward. With my homeowners' association, I had the number of homeowners, and that was my limited exposure. Here, you've got the entire town of Grants Pass, and everybody has an opinion. And some people who don't even live in Grants Pass have pretty strong opinions. So, yep, there's a heck of a difference.
All right. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
That's pretty much it.
Okay. Well, thank you for applying for the committee, for being here with us today. We will be making some decisions about appointments on Wednesday and let you know either way.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great afternoon.
Yep.
Okay. And the time was 12:15 for what he was?
No, I told him 12:25.
12:25 is when he-
Yeah, it's called 15.
Oh, Stephen was told 12:25?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Okay, apparently we'll move on. We have, I'm told that that applicant did not come to the committee interview either. So thanks for knowing that. We'll move on to our double erosion control permit. And is that you, Wade? All right, Wade Elliott from Public Works coming up to handle that presentation.
Okay. Well, good afternoon, mayor and council. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. Today, I will be talking about the erosion control permitting and the 1200 CN designation. So we'll be discussing the concerns of the Home Builders Association related to erosion control permitting, which is item number 21 from the email by Justin Gerlitz from late September. And this supports leadership and infrastructure by ensuring that permits are completed in a timely and financially prudent manner to protect our stormwater system. In November of 2022, the Josephine County Home Builders Association submitted a letter to community development identifying 19 topics at that time related to land development, infrastructure requirements, and development code changes and associated fees. The letter included suggestions and recommendations to change the current development process and rules. And in January of 2023, Director Clark replied to the letter with status updates on the 19 items, and the list was later expanded to 22 items. In May of 2023, council was presented with multiple options for resolving several outstanding issues addressed in the HBA letter. HBA provided a prioritized top five list, and item number 21 was considered urgent and moved into the top five, which is why I'm here today. So this presentation will cover item number 21, which as stated by the HBA, is the double erosion control permit. Starting in October, the new ODEQ Phase II Erosion Control Standards will be implemented. This requires builders and developers to obtain erosion control permits for any disturbance larger than 7,000 square feet, which is the typical median house-size lot. With this, the city was supposed to take over the issuance of these types of permits for all developments, including those over one acre of disturbance that were previously issued through ODEQ. We are being told that the city is going to still require a permit through ODEQ and the city for developments that disturb over an acre. This double permitting and double fee structure is not acceptable to the HBA and needs to be corrected before this permit is implemented. Well, we're a little bit further down the road than correcting this before the permit was implemented. In October of 2023, council adopted the Stormwater Management Manual and Erosion and Sediment Control Manual as required by the MS4 permit and the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality. The Erosion and Sediment Control Manual requires developers disturbing more than 7,000 square feet to obtain a permit from the city. And the city-issued permit is currently a no-fee permit, but that could change in the future. The city permit requires the applicant to demonstrate how they will be controlling stormwater and eliminating the transportation of sediment-laden waters off of the site. The permit application needs to show construction sites and the location of the erosion control proposed to accomplish the goal. A permit by the city of Grants Pass is required for sites between 7,000 square feet and one acre without involving ODEQ. This project's size is referred to as a "small" size within our Erosion and Sediment Control Manual. So large sizes are larger than one acre, and the applicant has to obtain a 1200C permit through the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality in order to develop these sites. And this requires a professional engineer to develop the plan and typically a lengthy process to get it through the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality. The city also requires essentially a duplicate application at this point and proof that ODEQ has approved their 1200C permit before we'll issue a permit on a larger site. So currently, Oregon Department of Environmental Quality retains authority to issue 1200C permits unless the agency is applied to be a 1200CN permittee. 1200CN agencies can issue those 1200C permits on behalf of ODEQ, but of course, they take on all the responsibility associated with plan approval and inspection and enforcement at that point. ODEQ has essentially washed their hands at this point and only would be brought in if there was an egregious error or sediment release. So within the valley, Rogue Valley Sewer Services, RVSS, is a 1200CN designated agency, and they cover a lot of the municipalities in the Upper Rogue Valley, which should include places like Central Point and Eagle Point and all of those kinds of areas. And they are a 1200CN agency. Medford is not part of RVSS's boundaries, and they do not have a 1200CN permit at this time. So when I asked them why they didn't have one, they felt that the MS4 stormwater permit was a little bit less stringent than the 1200C, and it gave them a little bit more development freedom as they were approving applications. They anticipate that the MS4 requirements are going to continually get upgraded as the permits continue. Currently, they're, they are a Phase 1 community, we're a Phase 2 community, so they're on a different permit cycle. But they are currently ratcheting up the standards required in their MS4 permits. So I think that's a pretty real possibility that at some point, it was, it's going to increase to the point that it's the same as a 1200C permit. They also anticipated that it was going to lead to increased staffing levels to take over essentially DEQ's job for issuing 1200C permits, inspection, plan review, wetland, studying the wetlands and how they might be affected by a development. So becoming a 1200CN would require higher staffing levels from the city of Grants Pass due to the increased review and inspection requirements. At that point, we would need to adopt a local fee to match those staffing requirements. Enforcement issues for non-compliance would also be dealt with only at the city level. So currently, we can call DEQ if there's a violation and we can't get the situation solved locally. We can call DEQ, and they'll come down with their bigger hammer than what we have. But if we were a 1200CN, that would be our responsibility. It would also increase the review times at a local level, and it would increase the city's liability for erosion and sediment control violations. Now, the benefits of a 1200CN is more local control for developments. We wouldn't be shipping these erosion control plans up to ODEQ. And reduced overall planning timeline because it eliminates ODEQ review periods. So in the previous slide, I said that it increased local review time, which is true, but I think that would offset into a net positive if you didn't have to send the permits up to ODEQ for review. And fees paid by the city would be used to actually inspect the project sites. I don't know when the last time some of the developers in the room have actually had ODEQ out on their project site, but it is infrequent at best. So it's almost a little bit of a taxation without representation. They don't have staffing levels to come out and inspect these. So if it was taken care of at a local level, we would have the staff to actually make sure that it got inspected. They are completely complaint-based. And there'd only be one stormwater permit and associated fees in this scenario. And a little bit of reduced paperwork for applications for the developers, you'd only be doing one permit. So council could direct staff to pursue the 1200CN permit during the next permit cycle. Staff would need to work internally on potential fee and additional staffing needs in the meantime. And I think I might have skipped a slide in there somehow. But so the big, the big takeaway from this presentation is that the 1200CN application period is only open every five years. So the next time that we could actually apply to be a 1200CN agency is, we anticipate in 2027. So there's really nothing we can do at this point other than to take a look at what a fee and staffing levels might be in anticipation for the next permit cycle. And if that's something the council would like to direct us to do, we would be happy to do that. Or you could take no action and continue not to charge for a city's internal permit and leave the 1200C requirements with the ODEQ. Somehow I skipped the most important slide in there somewhere. And that's the end of my presentation. Do you have any questions for me?
It's good to save the important one for the end.
Yeah.
Rick, do you have a question?
Thank you, Wade. When we're at LOC, there are different booths there advertising different consultants that are available, like for the building trades, there would be people that were consultants actually for hire just for that specific case. Would there be the opportunity to hire, and actually not have somebody on staff, but actually hire somebody out to process this? Of course, today with the internet and everything, it's easy to put applications on the internet and then have them come and actually do the inspection?
Well, it wouldn't be too dissimilar to what we do now. So currently, we have a contractor city engineer that reviews all of our stormwater plans. We don't do that in-house. We do some of it, but not all of it. And then we also have Keller &amp; Associates, who did our stormwater manual, and they're helping us through the first wave of the new Stormwater Management Manual. So we are leaning on them heavily for these initial applications. As for the inspection portion of it, I haven't heard of one that would have staff available to inspect them. to inspect them, but there could be one, and we could look into that.
Do you feel, of course, normally, most activity in the city has an inspection, do you feel that would be an important part to be in there?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. And that would be, if we didn't, if we weren't doing the actual review in-house and we farmed that out to a consultant, that could be less expensive from a staffing resource perspective. And maybe our current staff in the engineering department could handle it at that point. But you'd likely be paying close to FTE to a consultant to review.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Joel, then Val?
So Wade, thank you for the presentation. Would you anticipate the fees then would offset the need, the financial impacts of additional staff?
I do. Just off the cuff, I, Justin, Mr. Gerlitz would know this better than I do, but I think the application fee is somewhere around $2,000 for the DEQ permit. So I would imagine that if we took a similar number to that, it would be a net zero to the developers, but it could help us fund that position. But that's what we'd look at, make sure we got that number right.
Valerie?
Yeah, my question was, you're saying that currently, the Rogue Valley Sewer Service has a person. Is there any way, can you go to them right now? I mean, how much do they charge? Is there a way to use their services and maybe have them, you know, increase personnel and be able to utilize their service? Would there be any advantage to that?
I think that's a possibility. It's kind of a funny, long story, I guess. So they have their own, they have, they call it the SWAT team, which I'm officially a member of, but it's a stormwater advisory team, not nearly as cool. But they have their own Stormwater Management Manual, which we modeled ours after, if you remember. But they have an entire committee that updates and keeps their Stormwater Management Manual, Erosion Control Manual, up to date. So I would imagine that if we asked them for help, we would need to adopt their manuals and scrap ours so that they're working under the same guidelines. But it's a possibility, we could look at.
And just to add, so basically, this is, this is one more, and it's the irony of government, is it's one more mandate coming down from the state saying, "You need to do this." And basically, they're wanting to shove it down to us to pay for without, I mean, that's what it sounds like. And, you know, when you're looking at housing and you're always trying to decrease the cost of housing, it's kind of like the state speaks out of both sides of their mouth. On one hand, they say, "We need more housing." On the other side, they add more fees to make the price go up. So I don't know, has there been any move on anybody's part, like home builders associations or whatever, to try to let, talk to them about those sorts of things?
I'm not, I'm not real sure offhand, but maybe that'd be a good question for Justin later. I mean, I think everybody agrees that, yeah, there's more and more permits and requirements coming down from the state level, which obviously has an effect on development.
Any other questions for Wade right now? All right, and Justin is here representing the Home Builders Association. Did you want to jump in on this?
There you go. Thank you, Wade. Good afternoon, council and staff. Appreciate taking the time today to go over these items, like we've been doing, it's really helpful. As Wade said, you know, I think from a home builder's perspective, the biggest concern was we found out that there was going to be this second city permit that was going to be required for sites over an acre, and there was concerns about being charged double for the fees. Wade was pretty much right on, the cost for a 1200C permit right now, just to apply, is over $2,000. I think it's $2,100 this year, goes up about 100 or 200 every year. And then it's also $1,000 or over $1,000 a year to keep it active. And one of the big changes that we found that happened a few years ago, kind of when we, this whole Phase Two DEQ thing came about, is when we do, say, a residential subdivision, the original developer is responsible for this permit to construct the subdivision. Well, DEQ changed their rules and said, "Well, until every lot is developed within the subdivision, you have to keep this permit open." So you can imagine, if I'm a developer and I'm not building the houses out, say, I'm selling lots, I am now responsible, as the original developer, to keep this $1,000 or $1,100 a year permit open for however long it takes. And, you know, sometimes subdivisions get built out in a couple of years, and sometimes they take 10 years. And as Wade mentioned, in 22 years of being here and doing these permits, we used to have to do them for sites over five acres, and it shifted to one acre. I've had one inspection ever. So we pay, you know, $3,000, $4,000, $5,000 per project that are over an acre for these permits, and no one inspects anything. So, you know, just from a development perspective, I think it would be helpful eventually if the city could be a CN community and take these things over. Totally understand that there needs to be funding associated with supporting that, obviously processing time, paperwork, and inspections. I, you know, I would believe that most of the engineering inspectors that are on-site on a regular basis could also keep an eye on erosion control. I'm assuming they do now, but, you know, maybe, maybe, as mentioned, these fees could eventually be transferred straight over to the city. You know, again, the goal is not charging more money and taking more time to process these applications. So I would just, I would, I would ask council to support the fact, if we are going to have two permits for the time being, to not charge for that permit. And also, I'm assuming the stringent nature of DEQ's application process and drawing process would be adequate enough for the city as well. Hopefully, there wouldn't be any additional requirements from the city.
Questions? DJ?
So I just want to be explicit about the ask. It's maintain a no-fee policy, don't require duplicate drawings for the city permitting, and look in the possibility of becoming a 1200CN community.
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly, thank you.
Anybody else, questions? Rick?
Do you have any gut feeling if we were to try and contract out with Rogue Valley? If that would, if that would work, to have them take over the process?
Yeah, I couldn't answer that. I mean, obviously, it would depend on their own staffing levels. And as Wade mentioned, one of the complications is we now have a different stormwater design manual than they do with things that aren't the same. So it could be, it could be complicated to do that, but obviously, at some point, that might be an opportunity to hire someone in the transition period of becoming a CN community. It seems like it'd be worth looking into.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Rob?
So Justin, just, I think you just answered this for DJ, but so essentially, what they ask is, is no duplication of fees or costs and no duplication of permits.
Yeah, of permit application materials, yeah.
Right, short-term and long-term, basically trying to take the state, the state payment and the state non-inspection out of the, out of the picture, and the city taking responsibility for the whole thing.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Joel?
This is a question for Wade, and you may, may pipe in on it, that's fine. Why wouldn't we just accept the permit from DEQ? Why would we have a second permit?
Oh, we do. So we would say, "Hey, Justin, show us your 1200C permit and give us the drawings, and here's your permit." And we're going to have to do that until we're a 1200CN.
Yeah, so, and then you're good to go. And there's no fee associated with that, they just show you the permit. And there's no, no plans to implement a fee for that?
No, not this time.
Yeah, perfect.
Rick?
Justin, have you come up with timelines when it goes to the state? Roughly, what would be the average delay?
It's, it's been, during the normal season of construction, it's typically about four weeks to get a permit, once you submit. They have, unfortunately, just overly complicated the process, though. We, we used to do a single or maybe two-phase erosion control drawing set, and now they require about five different sheets. They want us to show every single step as we go as a standalone set of drawings. So instead of, usually, we include our erosion control plan in our basic drawing set, now we have to do this kind of separate drawing set, which is always problematic because contractors typically will grab the main one and put the other one aside. So that, that has added, you know, in addition to the fees going up, it's added a lot of cost to preparation of the plans that they require.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Val?
I guess, I don't know if this is a question, but I'm just kind of trying to figure out, because it seems like it's crazy that till 2027, there's really not a lot we can do, is what I'm kind of getting the feel for, is that until, has there been any pressure for them to do some certification? Are there other communities that are kind of feeling the same way that, or do other cities up north just have more as had already been turned over to them? Is there? I'm just curious as to why, you know, it's here, whether they have, there are more of those 1200CN permits up north, or, and why they would, it would be three more years until they could do some certification to get there? If you have any idea?
I have no idea why they open it every five years. I think it coincides with the permit period for the MS4 Phase One communities, but why it's not open in the meantime, I have no idea. I do know that there are more up north in the metropolitan areas, there's more 1200CNs there.
We only have one Rogue Valley.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't look in Roseburg and Eugene and those places, but...
Okay. Yeah, it's what kind of sounds like we wanted to stay status quo until, you know, as we watch them move in that direction and see what we can do. But I agree, the double paying is really ridiculous, and it would be nice to bring it down to have more local control.
Any further questions? I think, I think you're good, Justin.
Appreciate it, thank you so much.
Thank you for being here today. All right, council, any discussion on this item? DJ?
I mean, do we need to officiate it? The, you know, the current is no-fee structure, but still duplicate drawings. I mean, is, do we need official direction from council on this, or is this something that can just be administratively understood?
So the notes I took are no fee, no duplicate drawings, we'll accept the package from DEQ, which is the approved 1200C, and the same drawings that were turned in there, and then become a 1200CN at the first opportunity.
Cool, thanks.
Everybody good with that? All right, we're good with that, thank you. All right, we are going to jump back to our HBSC interviews. We have a candidate, thanks for waiting. Stephen Stone, if you could please come up to this podium here. Thanks for being here today and applying for our Historic Building and Sites Commission. Can you tell us a little bit about what you know about the HBSC and the role of a commissioner?
Good morning, council. My name is Stephen Stone. I don't have much to say on my knowledge of the council. I initially signed up for the council to learn more about it and see what I could do to be a part of it. Part of what I'm trying to do with this council and this city, being that I'm born and raised here, is start a Grants Pass Historic District project using 3D technology that can scan and create 3D mapping of our town. And there's a lot of opportunities that I'd like to create with that. I, I see that we may not have bridged the gap between my understanding of this committee versus what I was trying to help out with. I think that if there's a way that I could be of assistance for this committee, that I'd be happy to do so.
Okay, thank you. What, I guess, tell us a little bit about your background. What experience or knowledge or perspectives would you bring to the Historic Building and Sites Commission?
Three years ago, I started a company, it's called Stone Studios. Part of the vision was to bring marketing within this community through new means. We pull off of film, photography, and 3D rendering. The idea was to support tourism within this community, offer 3D mapping, city surveying. It actually can create a lot of opportunities within city surveying, which I've looked into, and the technology that's used for this, it's called DJI Terra, it's a software program that you could run for this. And there's a lot of opportunities that are created from that that could help subside from the efforts and needs from a city surveyor, because you're taking drone images by the tens of thousands. They are rendered tens of thousands of photos daily that could be used to help with some industrialization within this community. I've spoken with Tori Middlestadt regarding this project, and we've discussed implementation of this project. I'd like to see about just collaboration within this community with this type of information. I think with this committee, it'd be interesting to just really support and rally around our historic buildings. A huge thing for me and my company is the Historic District. That's really where we want to focus our attention on. It's about 32 acres of sacred land, home to Grants Pass. And I think we would like to really just be a part of saving and, and having actual images from this, this time in our history that we could look back on for sustainability and economic development. I think that's part of what I'm trying to get at with this company of mine. I'd like to help with just bringing in tourists, saving our, our information of our historic buildings, and supporting that in any way that I can. Another concept that we were discussing with Tori was a Grants Pass Historic Documentary, just highlighting a lot of our community efforts, such as Back to the 50s, Art Along the Rogue, the Hellgate Excursions, and then speaking with our elderly folks and tribes within the local area, being able to just demonstrate what Grants Pass is all about, learn about our history from before and where we're heading. And so I think I just am excited about seeing any opportunity I can. If that's being a part of this committee, I'd be happy to help, just to be able to spur economic development, bring in tourism, and just help map this community and make it a beacon for the future generations.
What do you see as important issues of preservation that confront us over the next few years?
I think if you look back over the last hundred, 100 years, you'll see photographs, and they're usually in black and white or early iterations of photographs called lithographs. Being able to have information to pull back off of, from our past, such as these images, going forward, we can create opportunities with having tens of thousands of images taken from a drone that can be stitched together into a 3D model. It's explorable through VR technology. Some of you guys have probably heard about this new stuff. It's basically creating a spatial information layer over the City of Grants Pass, which is using live cloud point data. That live cloud point data will be able to encapsulate a one-to-one scale 3D map of the entire city, if that's something that we decide. My first focus was the Downtown Historic District. With that, it's actually mapping a one-to-one scale map that you can pull back off of 50 years from now, and it's also scalable, too. So it's not just one iteration that's done and that's it. It builds off of itself with new iterations of, of software into that technology. Basically, a 3D map that you could look back on for scalability. And so you can, for example, have this lot right next to you guys that's empty. If we scanned the lot, then five, 10 years from now, when some economic development has happened, you'll be able to see that development through drone images. And so I think that type of spatial information is very valuable, especially if you're trying to build a sustainable community, which I would love to be a part of. As far as making this place a staple, I think having a 3D detailed map of that versus some of the other solutions that we've brought forth could provide new means of being able to offer opportunities for our future.
What three adjectives would you use to describe your personality?
I am very passionate about what I believe in, and I am a natural, or I'm a Grants Passian my whole life, and I really believe in Grants Pass. I think that having good work ethic is incredibly valuable in our society, and so I like to work hard. And I think something that may be overlooked often is someone's kindness. I think that that can really go a long way. And so just off the top of my head, I'd have to say, being passionate, working hard, and being kind.
Thank you. Any follow-up questions? Val?
Well, it's interesting, because I always ask about the tie-in between historic, whether you see a tie-in between the Historic District and economics, but I think you pretty well nailed that in your description, you know, of working with RDMR, Visit Grants Pass, and what could happen. But if you want to engage a little bit more on that topic, that would be great.
Sure. I think that having a digital twin is what it's called. Other names are 3D model or... Other names are 3D model or spatial information layer. These types of terms are playing off of the times that we're in. A lot of the iterations of new technology with AI and Chat GPT, this type of technology is becoming more and more common each day. I have done a lot of studying on this type of material and I thought that it would be a great opportunity to bring it within this community. There are no service providers that I have seen within Southern Oregon that could provide this type of technology. I'm interested in implementing that within this region. I think it can provide a lot of unique opportunities with the Historic Committee because that's really the focus is, is capturing our history where it is now and being able to time capsule and look over the next generation, next 10 years of, of our development with this city. I think being that where we are geographically, we'd have a lot of opportunities for tourism and within our local region, all of the natural access to rivers and streams and mountains. I think that this place is so beautiful. I'll give you another example with timber logging and the effects of, of sustainability there. And I, I look at our polls of, there's only 61 about miners and timber loggers within our community. And so a thought I had was using this drone technology to be able to scan mountains and be able to equate that to these sustainable cutting and replanting and trying to incite jobs within that specific industry. This type of technology is pretty scalable with all industries. Another one that Tori and I discussed was the public sector with fire marshals and police officers being able to use the night vision technology that this drone also is capable of using. It's multiversal in that essence where you can create 3D models, but you can also use it for other things too, such as finding someone in the dark if that's ever needed for that, or if there's dangerous things going on with fire and that's sustainability that affects tourism. And so when our backyard burned out this summer with, along the Smith River, I don't know if any of you have driven through there, but there's a lot of dangerous things that can be opposed from having fires, especially with a road like that. And it, and when we have things like that happen, we can use this technology to be able to scan those areas and provide those safety measures. I think those are a couple of the things that, just for sake of time, that I have thought of for this type of question. That said, I do think there's a lot of other things that we could touch on.
Does anybody else, Rick?
Thank you, Stephen, for applying. Your idea of Historic District and mapping that sounds very interesting. Is there a demo that we can go and look and see what this type of technology can provide on the internet?
Absolutely. I can provide those resources or we can set another time to be able to discuss those resources. I can give a presentation and yeah, I would love to be able to show you firsthand what that technology looks like. And I think this 3D mapping information would be really unique to bring into this community.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody else have questions? All right, I have one more. Are there any, are there any particular buildings or signs or features that you think would be especially suitable candidates for Historic Preservation Designation?
I think preservation is at heart of what I'm trying to get here. I think that you have buildings like the Redwood Hotel, you have Washington Street. You can look at Starlight even. And within G Street and Sixth and Seventh, within that 32 acre region of the Historic District, the proposal with the Grants Pass Historic Project is that we'd be able to have perseverance for the entire district rather than just focusing on a couple of buildings, which to focus on a couple of buildings, for example, if we did look at just the Redwood Hotel and maybe trying to turn it into something like Ashland's Lithia Hotel, refurbishing and just bringing in our history. I think you can take this same type of technology that I'm speaking about and it's also applicable to the ground. So it's using a different type of technology called Matterport Technology. It takes digital twins of the ground using a 3D scanning camera that you set on a tripod versus having mounted to a drone. So there's interesting things there because you're not only able to do the entire district from the air, but you can go inside from the air into each building, example, the Redwood Hotel and be able to view it in 4K, one-to-one scalability, which for perseverance long-term, you'd be able to actually have that information to look back on and also make iterations of. And you'd be able to find sustainability through having those images.
Thank you. Is there anything else you'd like us to know about your, you or your interest in the HBSC?
When I started this company, my number one priority was to put Christ at its center. So I'd like to just say that my inspiration is drawn from Jesus Christ and that that's where the heart of all of this is. I think that that's very important through anything and no matter who I'm standing in front, that that's made apparent.
All right, thank you, Stephen, for being here today and for applying for the HBSC. We will be making some decisions on Wednesday night and get back to all of the candidates and let you know whether you've been appointed and what the next steps are.
Thank you very much. And I will just say this is a lot of fun to be able to stand up before you and have a conversation. Thanks.
Well, thank you. Thanks for being here this afternoon. Enjoy the rest of your day. And we're going to jump back into water and sewer easements now. And he thought we were having fun before.
A little bit more in-depth topic on this one than the stormwater discussion that you just had, but nonetheless, very, very important. So our subject in summary is discussion of concerns from Home Builders Association related to the utilities and easements and in private streets. And particularly, this is items five and 11 from the email from Mr. Gerlitz dated September 28th. And this supports your council's rules of leadership and infrastructure by ensuring that our public utilities are developed and protected for future generations. So Wade read all of this background to you. I am not going to read it again in deference to your time, but it is just the timeline and it is the same timeline. This presentation in particular will cover. Item number five, private streets, previously no action from the, this is from, directly from the email. We need to make adjustments to the code which currently specifies dwelling units for specific sizes of private streets. There are no current accommodations for middle housing uses on these streets. Also with middle housing, we are installing more of these types of streets and common access routes. This is requiring fire hydrants and mains within the private streets, but there is still no accommodation for allowing water meters off of these lines. We need to allow flexibility for moving this forward as long as the meter reader can have access to the meter boxes. Now, I am not addressing all of these items in this presentation. I think the private street and how many dwellings that are on there is a much bigger topic. We are going to deal specifically with just the public utilities in the private streets as part of this discussion. And in number 11, water and sewer easements, this was asked to go to council action. Most other agencies allow for private water and sewer easements on private property. With middle housing land divisions, this is now our requirement. Staff does currently not support, but we would like to elevate to council review. So background, current codes and standards are designed to protect the citizens and the utility systems that we rely on. They are written to be as defensible as possible while allowing for the orderly development of the public utility systems with some exceptions that the city engineer can approve. Even with easements, placing public utilities on private property or allowing private utilities to cross property lines has resulted in conflict in the past. But there are also numerous cases where it has not resulted in conflict and I do want to make that very clear. So I'm going to break this into two discussions. One is private easements for water or sewer, private being between, say, yourself and your neighbor for your utilities to cross their property. And hang on, I'm trying to turn on my laser pointer before we get there. Again, this would be, include an easement between private citizen where one private citizen grants another private citizen permission to cross their property with their utilities for a case when, say, a property does not front the utilities. Our role would be that we would verify that an easement between the parties has been recorded and make sure that that is before any permits would be issued. So here's a couple of examples of that. I'm going to pull this up, hang on a second. So this is a water service and actually in this one, we caught several things. This was a really complicated one. This is the current water service right here in the, the blue line with the dashes. And as you can see, it crosses this parcel and this parcel before, and this parcel, so three parcels before reaching the parcel that it serves. And this is the current one, we've just approved permits on this a few years ago. So we do allow it when it, there's no other way to serve a parcel. This yellow line was their previous service and that service had a leak in it on one of the intervening properties. And as you can see, it crossed one, two, three, same number, three properties before reaching the property that it served. The problem was even with the easement, there was a longstanding dispute between two of the neighbors and it was going to court before that neighbor allowed that person on to service his line, even though he may have the legal right to be there. And an easement, accessing the private property to get that line fixed in the future was posing a problem. So we worked with them, found a different route. This one is actually, even though it crosses these properties, it crosses them all in the driveways. So it's going to be far more serviceable in the future. This is a couple of sewer examples. This one right here is one that had an issue a few years back. It was successfully able to be repaired, even though it is crossing private property. The house with the letter A on it here, his sewer lateral went out to the west, crossed in the backyard of this property here, actually failed, had sewage coming to the surface. Took a while to track down what the problem actually was because you wouldn't have thought their sewer maybe went that direction or that far. Successfully able to repair it, neighbors are still happy with each other, so it worked. This is another one where over time, this gentleman, the, the property here that's highlighted in blue, his sewer lateral came out to the alley. This were developed quite a while ago. As you can see, the neighbor built over the top of that, making it impossible to reconnect this, to redig a new sewer lateral. This one, we're actually in the process of working with the homeowner and it looks like they're going to be able to burst it and pull in a new sewer lateral, because otherwise what we were going to have to do is extend the manhole from E10 to the northeast to be able to get a sewer line in front of the property for this person to connect to. So potential benefits, this gives us the ability to serve landlocked parcels and it has been utilized in the past. There are potentially lower upfront costs for developers and homeowners because we're not having to extend public mains in places where maybe that they're going to be difficult to get to or that they just don't exist in the streets currently. Potential cons though are that there are potential civil issues when repairs are required. And it's not five years from now because generally those homeowners are the same homeowners that bought in, but it is, you know, several property owners down the line or when neighbors have disputes. It also makes portions of properties very unusable because you're still going to need to maintain those clearances for those lines and not build over the top of them. So the next one is easements, is public easements for water or sewer. Public easement would be defined as an easement granted to the city of Grants Pass for our infrastructure to cross private property. These would, are used to make crucial connections between water and sewer lines where no option exists to keep the pipes in the public right-of-way. And there's quite a few of these, to be quite honest, and we do allow them. Private connections, however, are prohibited on these lines and that's in our code and in our standards. So utilities in private streets, this is used in limited situations exclusively for sewer. In water, we do not allow connections to the water main on private streets. So here's two examples and I know they're hard to see, they're probably clearer on your photos, but I wanted to illustrate two different examples to feed a reservoir and the reason why this is important. So down below is reservoir eight, the one on the bottom. And as you can see, this water line crosses, I think, two properties before it gets to ours and it goes over hill and dale. This parcel was out in the middle of nowhere when it was developed and there was no right-of-way to here. So we do have to get easements from all of the adjacent properties and we ran those lines in easements. Whereas in reservoir 11 was constructed in the year 2000, we rerouted that line and we stayed within the public right-of-way until we crossed on to the city's property, keeping it within the right-of-way. Much cleaner installation, easier for repairs all the way around, no worries about access issues. But there is always going to be a case in the future where we're putting facilities and locations that are going to be a challenge. Here's a couple of sewer examples. I'm going to start up here in the upper right corner. This is a typical private street where we allow a public service and we get an easement from the properties where all of these cross and then each of the service laterals can tee into that public service. This is an example of a sewer line and an easement that was done maybe poorly. It would have been better served for this to be in the right-of-way. Some of these are really old, so I can't explain why they were developed the way they were. However, we would never, ever approve one like this in the past. There's no way that we can get into these folks backyard to replace this line. And when we go to change that, everybody's going to have a fairly large expense because we're going to have to get it down here into the street, into the right-of-way and turn all of those around. I think that there's grade for that on there. And then here's another one where it looked like what the intent was is that there would be a public alley here in the right-of-way. That never developed, but we end up with a sewer line and obstructing fences and whatnot in the way, which creates a problem in the future. And one other, and the reason I showed this one, it's very similar where it looks like there was supposed to be alleys put in place, but they were not. This one in particular where the cleanout is, and it's very difficult to see here, I wish I would have zoomed in a little bit more, is completely grown over. We can't get to that. And it's unclear who's responsible for keeping that easement clear, whether it's the homeowner or the city of Grants Pass. So again, potential benefits are we're able to serve landlocked parcels. They don't currently front right-of-way or utilities. We have the ability to make some critical connections when right-of-way is unavailable. That means we get a good, important water loop or we get from one drainage basin to another with the sewer or drainage. Again, potential cons is ownership issues related to private street repairs. So if we go in to make a repair or get a repair made, who is responsible ultimately for that if it fails? Makes portions of private property unusable. Again, we're putting pretty wide easements, especially on main lines. We need room to either put a second line in between or beside it or on top or be, or replace it in kind. And then potential access issues for future repairs, as you saw, some of those get encroached on pretty, pretty significantly. So our regional comparators do allow them. Medford Water Commission does allow water to be installed in private streets where they function more like public streets is what their engineer told me. Recently, they have tightened their approval process to ensure that there is a mutual benefit both to the water commission and to the developer, i.e. connection to another main creates a very vital loop or there's just not a connection there. The city of Central Point shared that they no longer allow private streets for residential development, or that's what their assistant director told me. They do still allow them for commercial use. And the reason was, was an ownership issue. They were running into trouble. And if I'm getting that incorrectly, I apologize, that was what the person told me. I'll show you the email. So when we talk about what a private street does, it acts more like a public street. This is a good example here in Grants Pass. The purple in our GIS system denotes that that is a private street. And as you can see, that private street comes in here, loops around and back out to another private, public street over here. This is a private street that functions far more like a public street than a typical private street. Most private streets are very short, they're dead end, you have a turnaround or a hammerhead at the end. This is one that would function more like a public street. So where are we at from a code standpoint? Current codes and standards do allow for installation of water and sewer lines in private easements in some cases. The language is vague on where and when that will be allowed, but the code also infers that private easements to serve one lot can also be granted. It, it doesn't explicitly say it, but it does infer that you as a person can grant an easement to an adjacent property owner. Current code and standards do also allow for the installation in private easements in some cases. Again, this is just more detailed language on those. I'm not going to read every- I'm not gonna read every word, I just wanted to have it up there for you folks to understand that there is opportunity to allow this. We will wanna probably refine some of our standards because when we get into water meters, that's where it gets a little bit more sticky. And that is that our standards specifically exclude water meters from being placed outside the right-of-way. Section 203.3.1, "All service meters shall be located in the service property improved right-of-way, adjacent right-of-way." Service meters will not be allowed in easements. I won't read all the rest of it in there, but we talk about how close they have to be and how close to the property line. So the current codes and standards are written to be very protective of citizens and to the utility systems that support them. There are opportunities to allow for individual exceptions when the conventional installation is not feasible. Increasing public utilities in private streets, I think, will blur the line between private and public ownership. We get calls weekly on private streets from citizens wanting us, because they're taxpayers, to come fix their streets. And by putting more of our infrastructure into those streets, we make that less clear that it is a private street because we put more public infrastructure in there. So that is a concern that we have. Not that we can't make it work, but it is a concern that we have. By maintaining the current system, citizen staff and contractors know where the public portions of the utilities begin and end, reducing confusion over ownership in the future. So I've got a long list of alternatives. We can keep existing practices in place and work with variances and procedures on a case-by-case basis. We can form a standards review committee to review current standards and recommend revisions to the council for your consideration. There are several standards that are, to be quite honest, a little out of date that could use some freshening, but that might be an approach that we could look at. We can direct staff to revise the rules. Just tell us what to do and we'll go bring you back a rule change for, to allow private easements to serve one lot that does not serve front public utilities. Or direct staff to revise the rules and allow public utilities, including meters, in easements on private streets. And with that, I would love to take your guys' questions.
Thank you, Jason. As you know, I was with county planning for 20 years, so I've seen a lot of instances of conflict in these situations. So just looking at the entire picture that's out there today and how it's been functioning, I realize no system is perfect. Has, in general, has existing system worked fairly well?
So, back in the 60s through the 80s, I would say that our standards were a lot looser and we allowed for a lot more crossing of property lines with public utilities and private utilities. And as of today, those get us in more trouble. The system that's in place today is pretty, it's pretty rigorous, though. You know, and you've gotta be in the right-of-way or you have to dedicate right-of-way or you don't put your personal connection within that private easement. I think that's the most protective that it can be and I think that it will provide the citizens with the most protection well into the future. Is there opportunity for you guys to make changes to that?
Other questions? Joel?
So first off, Jason, I don't know what I'm talking about. So, but, so we got a private street and they put in six houses. The meters can't be on the private street. So the meters are back on the public street and then you have six lines going in instead of one.
That is correct.
And it seems like that's six times the expense, just looking at, not, not, not looking at avoiding the future conflicts, but, but that's six times more expensive than doing it with a easement and just having one pipe going in with laterals going off to each house.
So in the case of the water line, you would be running and, don't hold me this, our minimum standard is eight inch for something that's more of a private, we might consider a smaller size, but say an eight-inch line, which is going to be far more expensive than running eight one-inch lines because those cost differential is significant. So I don't think that we can say the cost is six times more. You're not digging six trenches, you're probably still digging one trench that all six water lines follow. So there is, you know, is it more expensive? Maybe, but not six times more expensive.
Thank you.
Valerie?
So my question on that is, okay, it's a private street, one of the people has or an issue on the pipe going in and has to have street whatever dug up or whatever. So because it's a private street, then the cost of that is on them, correct?
That is correct.
And they all know that going into it, that that is how it is.
That is correct.
Correct. So I'm assuming that everything is basically tied and put on the, on, you know, when they get the title or whatever, that they're given the understanding that that is their responsibility for the street.
Yeah, I'm not sure how that portion works. I know it gets more complex the older the private street is. And the more times that property has changed hands.
Yeah, and I would imagine that's kind of part of it, is that people just assume that if it's a street, it's city-owned and they hadn't really given it much thought. So, but I, my understanding is it's becoming more of an issue because of the middle housing. Has that kind of opened it up to where all of a sudden you're looking at property that we're kind of going back and through? Is that, has that been part of what has created this?
Yes, yeah. I will say we're seeing some projects come through that we've never seen in the past that are, are challenging our folks on how to review those correctly.
So I guess I don't exactly know what the ask is, and I guess...
So from the Home Builders Association, if I can paraphrase this, and I know that Justin's gonna get up and talk about this, I think that they would like to see us open up the easements. Definitely allow meters onto private streets, water meters onto private streets. And, but I believe beyond that, it's just to be a little more flexible with allowing public water and sewer on private in easements as opposed to in right-of-way. Did I paraphrase that fairly well?
Shared.
Okay. Oh, shared, yeah. That's a different issue, but yes.
Rob?
So it seems like, you know, I mean, I had some idea of a couple of these different variables, a couple of different problems. I didn't have, I didn't understand the extent to which the different challenges, how the different challenges could manifest and how they could be very different in different situations. So I appreciate this presentation for that reason. When, under alternatives, you write, "Form a standards reviews committee to review current standards and recommend revisions." How do you, how do you see that standards reviews committee, the role of, and what, what would be the parameters of the study there? And do the home builders and/or Justin and/or DJ, would they look at a standard reviews committee as the, as a potential benefit and the same way the city would? But how do you look at a standard reviews committee?
I would ask them to answer that question, but directly, I would think, yes, we would want to, the first time that the standards were involved, we included members of the development community. We also then reference AWWA standards or WEF, who handles the wastewater side of things, so that we look at our standards in comparison to nationally accepted standards. We come up with what works for Grants Pass. We get those adopted, those are adopted by the city council. So I think there is a potential for them to provide meaningful input because they're the ones that are out there building it. We definitely wouldn't want them just to say, "Here's your new standards." We would want that to be a collaborative approach.
So, so who do you see being, who are, who are contributors or members on a standards reviews committee from your perspective?
Definitely Home Builders Association and the development community, our existing engineering and water staff, possibly even water staff or wastewater staff from other communities to help look at our current standards, point out areas where there might be an opportunity to make some improvements.
Rick?
So Jason, on the pri, on putting the private water meter, putting the water meters in a private street, would those be fed by private lines to, from?
No, you would then be essentially treating water similar to sewer. You would run a public main in an easement in the private street and then connect the meters to it. Some of the things that, if you want us to explore that, that we'll want to explore, a lot of private streets have limited sidewalks, so we have limited areas. They're very narrow, so we have limited areas of where to place the meters safely. We also know that a lot of private streets, while they don't, I think they exclude parking, but they also often have parking issues. And so I think what we would see is, how do we protect the meters from damage? So we would wanna come up with a good standard for meters on a private street.
So if we're going from private lines, as you've already said before, to a main, we are increasing the cost quite a bit.
I don't, I think that there's some offset there. I mean, I would, I would appreciate either, you know, maybe Justin can answer that. I don't know the cost of development. I am assuming running, you know, if we're serving, say, eight houses, that eight one-inch or inch and a half service lines is cheaper than running an eight-inch main. There's more complexity, of course, you know, that you've got eight lines instead of one that you're trying to wrangle, but you still have to have all your service connections and then meters. But like I said, I just, I don't know that cost is a fair.
Is there an opportunity to go to a six-inch main or would you have to change the code or that's it?
That would depend on if a fire hydrant has to be placed in the back, if a fire hydrant has to be placed off of it, that's gonna be eight-inch.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Rob, did you have a question?
It just seems, you know, when, when I walk, I, I'm observant of where the water meters are and I know I've seen some private streets that have all the water meters at the, we'll say at the initiation of the private street and obviously all individual lines going the distance. I've seen other private streets where the, all the water meters in a, in a bunch are, you know, at the deep end of the, the cul-de-sac or whatever. It seems like there's so many potential different ways of doing it. I, I think that, quite frankly, I think council is wasting our time to discuss every possible iteration of everything that you presented today. So I'd like to know what, you know, what, what you and/or Justin would say is a, maybe your, you know, recommendation would be a form of standards reviews committee, but it just seems like for us to continue answering questions is, quite frankly, a wasted time because we're not gonna get anywhere.
Well, maybe we can hear from Justin at this point?
Yeah, sounds good. Justin, can you come up and let us know what the Home Builders Association interest is?
Hello again. I, I understand that this is a, unfortunately, this, this topic has become more complex. When, when the home builders brought this up originally, it had to do with the old code, so we'll go, you know, say a year and a half ago or so, prior to middle housing. It was really a private street question. And what we found is the fire marshals and the fire code has also become more stringent, is now requiring anything short of maybe a four-lot private street, so you start adding more lots and it gets longer, to install a fire hydrant down the street. And what that requires, as Jason mentioned, is an eight-inch fire main. So now the developer is mandated by fire code to install an eight-inch main down a private street at the cost, which was not inexpensive. Then what we're having to do right now of current code is we're also having to run, I call it the spaghetti of lines, in a separate trench in addition to that eight-inch main down the private street in a different location. Therefore, we're doubling our cost or, you know, somewhere around there. So that was the reason this was first brought up. And what, and I just keep finding ourselves as we move forward is we're using more and more private streets. I think private streets came out, if I remember correctly, sometime around '08, '07, somewhere in that vicinity. And before that, it was just public streets. Unfortunately, what we've now done, well, fortunately and unfortunately, I've mentioned to all of you before, is the middle housing code has been implemented. That was implemented about a year and a half ago and we are now doing more middle housing projects. We're in the planning phases right now because it takes a while than we are actual normal residential subdivisions. We are taking lots that were unable to develop in the past and we're now putting four units, eight units, 10 units, 12 units on these lots. Great, I think that's the intention that the state wanted us to do. They said they want these metropolitan areas to be able to add density at a lower cost, therefore reducing the cost per unit of infrastructure. That, that was, I think, the ultimate goal. But with that comes, we're not in Kansas anymore. We aren't developing lots with frontage anymore. Middle housing land divisions that came out a year ago are now letting us take these, we'll call them mini-units or small units or cottages, and divide them into small lots. And these lots don't have to have frontage on a road anymore. Historically, before middle housing land division, every single lot had to have frontage on a road. So the city's code said, "Extend a service line to the road through your own property." That's where that all came from. Now, we are clearly allowed to chop up lots in the, we'll call it in the back. So imagine you have a house in the front and you have this big backyard. Well, now the state's allowing us to build units in the back, section them into their own small lots, therefore allowing someone to purchase, say, a 900-square-foot cottage for less money, two-bedroom, one-bedroom, whatever, on their own lot, transfer their equity into it and actually own it. This is, we're, we're doing this right now on several projects where we're doing these cottage cluster developments. I think they're gonna work really well. We're getting the price point down from $430,000 or $50,000 for a house, down to somewhere in the $300,000 range. But the only way this works is if we could start to combine some of these utilities and cross lots. This is a brand-new topic that just came up on Friday, unfortunately. We have not had a chance to vet it out with these guys. And I do understand the concerns from the city's perspective about looking out for the public because of course that is important. But now we've got developers going, hey, I've several of them right now, I wanna take a single-family lot and I wanna put four townhome units on it. Most of these single-family lots today have one sewer lateral on them. They want to, because of the, the financial ability to actually develop these projects, they wanna take that sewer lateral and split it off and run it to the four units that are on there, the four middle housing units. And what we're running into in discussions is, you know, DEQ traditionally has said, "Each lot has to have its own service," and that's what it was. But what, where there's a difference is condominiums. I think everybody's familiar with the idea of a condominium. You take a parent lot, we'll call it, you build a building or multiple buildings or multi-story buildings. You, as an owner, carve out your piece of that lot, or in the case of multi-story buildings, sometimes they actually own the air where that unit is, if it's on a second or third story. Everybody shares the same services. There's an HOA, a homeowners association. Homers Association is a legal entity that has insurance, that is charging maintenance fees every year to ultimately take care of these shared amenities, which includes water lines, sewer lines, storm drain lines, parking roads, sidewalks, the whole thing, landscaping. So, and again, I like to come here with a specific ask and unfortunately, I guess this got more complicated a few days ago. My general ask is, are we gonna be a community that sticks with the old, the old, you know, ways just because that's how it's always been? Or are we gonna say, hey, there's a brand-new way to develop housing right now that the state has said, "You shall do this, you are allowed to do this." And are we gonna do everything we possibly can to make these developments more efficient, therefore bringing the cost and the rent down on each of these units, which I think is ultimately the most important thing in our community at the moment because we have just, we just don't have the incomes to support the cost of these houses. And it's just, it's getting worse every single year. And to me, this is something that I'm asking for the ability for the homeowners association, the builders, the developers, everybody in this community to work with City Public Works and come up with reasonable solutions through easements, through shared services, through allowing, you know, water services off of these fire mains if they're required versus sticking with our old ways of what we've always done in the past because in the past was the past and we did things different. I think that's some, I won't, I won't get into too much more detail here, but I think that's, that's the ask today.
We have questions. Rick, then Rob.
So Justin, do you know, I realize the code requires certain sizes for water mains. For a fire hydrant, can you get by with a six-inch or you always need an eight-inch?
The city code right now says an eight-inch. There's definitely situations where from an engineering perspective, you can get away with a six-inch if it's, you know, if it's not over a certain length. Your comment on, you know, could you share a three- or a four-inch water main and call it a main and then have services off of that? There's situations where I think that would work as well. And again, the biggest thing is just not, it, we just keep getting into these situations and this doesn't just go for private streets anymore. Again, we're doing these cottage cluster developments now. They're, they're deep, they're long, they're not on the roads. And the fire marshal says, "Hey, you gotta be within..." And the fire marshal says, hey, you got to be within, you know, 400 feet of every house at every point, so you got to bring a fire hydrant back into that site. So the developer is responsible for extending a, you know, very expensive fire line into the site. We're just looking for the ability to pull off that line versus up front. One other thing I'll mention on water is, is pressure is super important. So if you've got a 500 or 800-foot-long water service, every foot of that pipe you lose pressure on. So by the time you get to the house, you now have to oversize the line. We've actually gotten into a couple situations, especially if you're on a hill, where you have to oversize the meter. And then that gets into the system development charge discussion, is wait a minute, you know, I have to put an inch and a half or a two-inch meter in, but I'm only using the same amount of water as a, as a normal three-quarter-inch service. So just, you know, and, and again, that's, that's the complication with, with what we do with development. Every situation's different. Jason's examples of sewer mains running through backyards, yeah, that doesn't make any sense at all. What I find out as an engineer is 40 years ago, there was probably a reason. It was probably something super complicated, and now we deal with it.
So is fire code set by the state?
It is. It's got a sep, the, the fire code is the same as the building. There's a building code, a fire code, and a development code. So fire code dictates how many houses you can have on a deadened road, how, you know, where you have the fire hydrants and fire access for trucks.
Okay. Thank you.
Rob?
Yeah, thanks, Justin. So it, it seems as though, you know, your fire hydrant example and the ability to tee off an eight-inch main in that situation, it almost seems like that would be a, we'll say, a textbook example that would bolster your case for flexibility. But when you talk about, you know, you use the word efficiency, it, it seems as though, what I'm hearing more from you and the home builders, I guess, or the home builders, you, the focus is on efficiency to build and bringing costs down. What I hear from Jason, it's more like efficiency to maintain, potentially five or 10 or 30 years down the line. I don't necessarily see that much overlap between those two definitions of efficiency. So that, to me, is what, as a counselor, that's what I'd like to see bridged, somehow bridged. And again, there's still going to be gray areas, I'm sure, but it, it seems as though there's, there's, you know, it seems like you're focusing on the half that's really hot today, which is building new, and Jason's focusing on the other half, the backend, the cleanup, so to speak. So how do, how do we bridge this?
I think there's a, I think when it comes to main lines, Jason and the Public Works Division have a lot of input on. Those are their mains, they're going to be their mains for indefinitely. So, you know, if you're running a main through somebody's front lawn, it's hard to maintain it, and you don't know what they're going to put on it. If you're running a main up a private street, which is a paved road, it's privately maintained and owned, but it's accessible, that's a different story, because now they can access it similar to a public roadway. I think the, the gray area is, is off of these streets. So back to this middle housing discussion, is if I'm building a bunch of, a network of sewer laterals and water laterals, we're not asking the city to maintain those, we're not asking to make them public, we're asking them to, to, to be private. Homeowners associations, historically, so we go back 30 or 40 years, they didn't have the legal ramifications that they do today. You know, you just, I'm a homeowners association, I'm just going to send out a bill, whatever. Today, it has to be a legal business entity, it has to have insurance policies, it has to collect money, it has to have accounting, treasurers, presidents, you know, the whole nine goes into it. So, you know, when it comes to the mains, yes. Water main in a private street, again, that was where this discussion started. Unfortunately, today, now it's much more complicated. We're also asking for the ability for onsite middle housing. I'll, I'll just say middle housing, I'm not going to focus on traditional development. Traditional development is kind of still fits the bill. Middle housing, you know, we need the ability to not have to put a $5,000 or $8,000 sewer service in four times when there's an existing lateral there that's perfectly, has the perfect capacity to serve those four units. They already let us do shared water services, so I could do a master water meter at the road, and I can do what we call sub-meters to each individual unit in the back. The challenge with that is the homeowners association now has to read these meters, create a bill, collect the money, and they don't have, they don't, you know, collecting the money is the harder part. You know, it's like, hey, if somebody doesn't want to pay their bill, now you have to go after them too, just like they weren't paying their rent. But I think, I think ultimately, you know, back to the city's responsibility and the city's concerns is outside of the, of the, you know, water main for the hydrant and meters off of that. I think the rest of it is not the city's responsibility, it's, it's the homeowners association's responsibility for these shared systems. You know, and, and Jason and Wade have made good points. They've had situations where they get the phone call, my water service broke, my sewer service that's shared is clogged. I don't know where it's clogged, I don't know where it is. But the reality is, is that's ultimately not the city's responsibility, because somebody has, has agreed through purchasing this property that there's a shared system, that's a, that there's a shared maintenance cost, and they're paying fees every month or every year to pay for those things, so.
So, so does it make sense, and again, I don't, this is not at all my area of expertise, does it make sense, when I'm looking at the maps and some of the problems that Jason was pointing out, to have easements pretty much confined to perimeters of properties? To me, what I'm thinking is, that way you don't have to worry about someone building a house over it, or putting a swimming pool, even if it's above-ground pool over it. But if the easements were along perimeters, the worst someone might have to do is dig up a fence or some hedges, rather than have to, you know, remove someone's home or whatever. Does that, does that make sense?
Absolutely. And that's, and that's, I mean, today, when we do designs, that's what we do. Because your, your buildings have a minimum setback, typically in Grants Pass, it's five feet. So usually, if we're doing a shared service, we, storm drain is a very common shared service that no one has any issues crossing property lines with. We almost always will stick that pipe a few feet into that five-foot setback, run it down there, have a five-foot easement, you build a house up to the side of it. So yes, I mean, when you get into these unique situations, Jason had showed a few of them, where you got stuff running willy-nilly, and it's, you know, in the middle of a lot, somebody builds a building over it, that's definitely a unique situation, and it shouldn't happen. But we have a lot of, I mean, easements exist everywhere. In Grants Pass, irrigation piping is what we have easements on, and they run everywhere. I mean, almost every single project that we work on has an irrigation line of some sort on it, or a canal, or a ditch, or an access road. And we accommodate it, we put it within an easement. We can't build in it, it's, it's recorded that way, and, you know, anything that anybody does beyond that, it's illegal. And, you know, we can't, we can't always prevent illegal. There's always going to be people that do really dumb things against the law, and it's no different than crime.
Valerie?
I, I don't know if it's really a question, it's a little bit of it. Because HOAs are a little scary too, because I, I don't think they're regulated by the state, and I know that, you know, like, when you're, when I'm looking at property or whatever, look up north, I mean, it is outrageous that some, one of some HOAs actually charge for that. So that's, in a sense, a whole nother can of worms when you build that. But then I guess that's the responsibility of the, when they buy it, they kind of know going into it that that is there. So, yeah, so like I said, I, right now, the whole, whole idea of HOA is a little scary, just because I know how much and quickly they can grow and be as much, at least half, half as much of the house payment in its own way. So anyway, those are a little scary to me. But I really, you know, in listening to Rob kind of talk about the standards review, we cannot be the only city that's kind of dealing with this right now, with the middle housing code coming from the state. So I would imagine that there's other communities that are kind of dealing with this sort of thing. Have we reached out to the other committees, other communities and seeing what they're doing about it? Do we know, have any idea? Have you talked to other home builders?
Yeah, that, well, again, this, that middle housing discussion, it was, it was last Friday, so it's, this is very fresh. I think Wade actually did reach out to a couple communities, I think Medford being one of them, and Portland being the other. But yes, I ask the same question all the time, and we're the, we're the little redheaded stepchild community of Oregon, right? We're the small baby sister or brother compared to Eugene and Medford and Portland, and Bend, and some of the communities like Beaverton around Portland. This is happening everywhere. This is, it's just brand-new. And brand-new's scary, and, and, you know, the first time, I think Brad, you know, I'll, I'll put Brad on the hot seat, it was a planning thing to start with, right? Wow, there's a brand-new planning process, and Brad and his staff have been super great. We've, we have had countless meetings over the last couple of years, figuring it out together. It's new law. It's just like when the laws changes, or the tax code changes, you know, all of a sudden everybody's like, whoa, this is, couldn't ever do this before. But with that comes complications and fear, and, and it's different, and how are we going to kind of integrate this all back in? But, you know, HOAs, Valerie, back to, to that point, honestly, we're having to do HOAs on almost every project we do anymore. The reason being is stormwater management. We're having to create these stormwater ponds and these stormwater treatment systems, which have just got much more cumbersome with the new code, and the city doesn't maintain them. So now you have to have an HOA, if anything, just to maintain that. Planner strips and trees, you know, planner strips have been a, what seemed like a great thing, they've become a detriment in our community, in my opinion, in a lot of situations, because no one maintains them. So what we're doing now in subdivisions is, we're putting them in because we have to, but the HOA is maintaining them, the grass, the irrigation, because if not, they look terrible. So ultimately, the HOAs, the days of kind of not having an HOA on a subdivision are dwindling away. So you kind of, you already have that legal entity. Like I said, it's a registered business, the state of Oregon. You have to have a HOA, you have to have a HOA rules of, rules of management, it's not the right word for it, but, so, yeah, it's just making sure that everyone's aware that they're collecting the fees, yes. Is there outliers that are ridiculous? Of course. You know, they're charging, you know, $500 a month, or $1,000 a month, or something crazy. But, you know, some of those also have water slides, pools, tennis courts, pickleball courts, and the whole nine, so.
On these mains and hydrants that are located on private roads, is the, the homeowner responsible, or is the city responsible for that segment of the line?
The city's a respons, so the city allows a public water main for a hydrant in private streets, and they allow a public sewer main, actually require a public sewer main, when you can't get to it from the main road with services off of it. So really, this is just the third last piece, I guess, that's the request related to private streets, is if we have the sewer main and we have the water main for the fire hydrant, all we ask is that we could tap off of, of that main line, that public main line, for meters. And then the concern, which is valid, is making sure those meters are accessible to a meter reader, because the meter reader has to come out and buzz their, their wand over it once a month to get a reading off of it. On the longer private streets that usually require fire hydrants, there's typically a four-foot sidewalk on the side of that private street. So, you know, in my opinion, that's the location you put the meter, just like you would out in the, in the main public street out front.
So if something were to happen where that main needed to be accessed, the city would be responsible for repairing the, the private road?
Yes. Similar to, similar to, if, if the, if the main broke, tell me if I'm wrong, the city would be responsible for repairing it.
Okay. Or any sort of hydrant maintenance, that sort of thing?
Yeah. But if a service line broke, just like it would, I mean, if your sewer lateral breaks in the street out in front of your house, it's your responsibility to fix it. Surprisingly, if the sidewalk goes bad out in front of your house from tree roots, it's your responsibility to fix it. I think there might be some shared costs going on lately on that. So, you know, the mains are the mains, and that's why I said, when it comes to public works, it's, that's, they should have a lot of care about a, a main situation more than anything, because it's going to be around for 60 or 80 or 100 years. But services are typically a responsibility of the person that's using the service, whether it's in a public road or a private street.
Sure. I mean, I guess it just strikes me that that would be kind of where this, you know, comes into play with, generally, you know, the, the user is responsible beyond the meter, right? So we're talking about how to move the meter back closer to where the houses are, which would be coming off this main near the hydrant.
Yep. And that's, that's what we're saying, is even if it's a shared sewer lateral or a shared water service behind the meter, ultimately, the city's responsibility stops there. And yes, could 20, 30 years from now, there be a problem, and somebody calls the city? Sure, they might just naturally call the city. But, you know, from this day forward, we have very good legal documents and easements on plats and things like that, that are, that are recorded, and, and you can reference back, you know, whereas 30 years ago, we didn't. And, and that's where I think you run into the problems that they're seeing today, is 30 years ago, it was handshake deals, you know, creating lots off of handshakes and, and transferring some money. So, you know, things have really changed, and, you know, Rick, I know you worked at county planning for a long time, and I'm sure you, you can see that as well, so.
DJ?
Sure. I think it's important to focus the conversation about what was asked for. Initially, this, this was identified as an urgent topic from home builders, allowing for easements for water on private roads, right? And I think it's really important to stay focused on what that ask was. We still believe that that is an important thing. We think it's that one last piece that we're currently not allowed to do in development, and it's the position that we should be allowed to do it, from an installation and a maintenance perspective. What's easier to maintain, a 150-foot-long water line that services one resident, or, you know, a 20-foot lateral off of an already-placed sewer main? I mean, or water main? So there's one ask. And the other ask is easements to accommodate for infill projects that need to be done, right? And of course, the designs need to be done well, right? There needs to be design standards for how they're done. We've seen some disastrous examples of ill-designed projects that are there, right? So that's not what we're asking for. Yeah, the design needs to be clever, but the position is that it should be allowed, right? And then now the third and very fresh perspective, that I think this conversation needs to mature into eventually, after we address those two asks, is middle housing is making things more complicated. And we currently don't have rules or regulations that are going to accommodate for that change. And I think that the conversation absolutely needs to happen on a policy level to accommodate the change for the new way of doing things. And I think that it's apt to call it the new way of doing things, right? And those regulations are arguably getting in the way of these ideas of middle housing coming to fruition. So let's maintain focus on the asks, those two asks, and then understanding that this conversation needs to mature into more of a middle housing conversation.
Any other questions for Justin?
No.
Thank you, Justin. All right. Council, thoughts? Where you'd like to go, Val?
Well, I, I'd like to, and I thank you, DJ, for kind of bringing us back, because it's kind of an easy hole to go into. But I do think that the, the purpose of the middle housing code, and it's something that I've always said, is that that's what's going to bring us out of this housing crisis that we have, that we have not been able to bring in a lot of, we don't have a bunch of huge lots to bring in, huge multifamily. But I do believe our, our builders are trying to do the middle housing and trying to get more density. And so I, I tend to agree that we should allow, allow the home builders to do, I mean, go along with that and tell, meanwhile, I do think it's also important to put that, put together that standard review committee of some sort, or have the builders and the people get together to hash things out, because it is a new world and it is different. So I think that there's a value in having that. But once again, to get out of this housing crisis, we need to bring down the costs of housing, and if that's something that's going to allow it to happen, I, I, I agree. And I, you know, having my husband, who built half this town, I swear, and I, and I think he did a pretty good job. But I will tell you, a lot of handshake deals were done around town, and there's a lot of stuff that we're paying the price for that wasn't done properly. And so now we realize in hindsight the costs down the road for that. So I don't ever want to go down that road, I want to make sure that it's eventually written down and code-wise, but I also think we can learn from that. And I do think that if it's going to bring down the cost of housing, that I am willing to say yes, allow them to go ahead, direct staff to revise rules to allow private easements to serve one lot that does not front public utilities, or direct staff to revise rules to allow public utilities, including meters and easements on private streets. I would be willing to go along with that, as long as we also had a committee going forward for a standard review involving the city and, and developers and builders moving forward. So that's my idea, just out there.
DJ?
I'm going to agree with you. I see no reason why we shouldn't be accommodating to those initial asks. But given the complication of middle housing, you know, perhaps a committee of some kind that can wrap her minds around it might be a good idea, you know? Notwithstanding that, you know, there are readily identifiable things that home builders have been working on that can still also be worked on. I don't want to create a, this bureaucratic process that's going to get mired down in procedure, right? And, you know, that's going to potentially have this council sort of ignore the work that's, that still needs to be done in the meantime. So that being said, yeah, I'm, I'm willing to approve the two asks, and then do a forthright pursuit of how are we going to deal with middle housing in this community. pursual of how are we going to deal with middle housing in this community.
Rob?
Yeah, I, I totally agree with the, basically the third and fourth bullet point on the alternative sheet with both DJ and Valerie, as well as, I think DJ makes a good point that if we're going to have a basically some kind of standard reviews committee or whatever, that doesn't mean we have a moratorium on anything that is in gray areas right now. We continue to try to look at those on a case by case basis. But, but I'm also in favor of the forming some kind of committee with broad representation and that doesn't mean we have to slam on the brakes that anything that, until that committee has recommendations, which could be months or years, we don't have to slam on the brakes that anything falls into a gray area. But I'm, I'm all for the three, the three bullet points on that page as well.
I guess I'm not certain, when we talk about setting up a standards review committee, who's your expectation of who would be on that committee as opposed to, I guess the way I'm reading it is that that's different than items three and four directing staff to propose revisions? Maybe I'm just reading it wrong. Rob?
I was just going to say, I wrote down at the time, I think, I don't know, remember who brought it up, but having home builders association, development community, along with our own staff be the people who are on that, so the people who are directly involved in that process. And I think you're right, you don't want it to become an ongoing for whatever, but have it beginning and ending to just look through the codes and see how to make the middle housing code work.
DJ?
Sorry, I had to look at those, the bullet points to say, okay, what are we doing here? Well, obviously not one, keep existing practices in place. But yes, two, form a standards review committee, but also understanding that bullet point three and four are, we need to allow those things. And then as far as structuring of the standards review committee, that's going to be a council's, council's prerogative, right? But it's obvious, developers, home builders, leaderships in public works and community development, you know, and structuring it in such a way that, that we have an effective committee, right? So I guess to say in...
So you're talking about an ongoing committee, not just some, some, a committee that would deal with items three and four?
Yeah, items three and four, in, in my opinion and understanding it and also being a part of the association that brought forward these issues, these, these are, I don't want to belittle them, but they're no brainers to me. But moving forward in the obviously more complicated issue of, of, of middle housing, I think it's going to take a, a little bit more structured effort, manifest through a committee.
Okay. I guess the real important thing is, Jason, do you understand what the council direction is here?
So I was hoping I would be given a chance to kind of regurgitate what I think I heard. I, I think what I'm hearing is staff should come back to you in the short term with code language that allows private easements to serve a lot that doesn't front public utilities as well as code changes and standard changes, small ones, to allow for water meters off of private streets. In the meantime, we will also form a standards review committee that will tackle some of the bigger picture items of how do we address utilities in middle housing developments? Is that?
Sounds correct to me.
I just saw two thumbs. I'm good with two thumbs.
Oh, we're going with two now, huh? I don't think any, does anybody disagree or want something different? Okay, I think you got it. Thanks, Jason. All right. Anything else on this topic? No? All right. Next up, agenda review. We have a meeting Wednesday night. Starting off with a couple of public hearings, one is regarding an ordinance development code amendment regarding multi-unit development in manufactured homes. Second has to do with amending the solar code. Then a council action item that would be an annexation regarding 630 Lincoln Road. Consideration of a resolution of sale of city property. We have public funding discussion is tucked in the middle there, but obviously a big one that night. And then we have our consent calendar items are a resolution that would approve an award for the Welcome Center, rehab, resolution that would approve the Microsoft Enterprise Agreement, resolution to approve a meter reading contract, a motion that would acknowledge the SDC annual report, a motion that would acknowledge the monthly investment report, a motion that would approve the findings of facts in the development code, some committee appointments for HBSC, Budget Committee, Parks and Tree Committees. Tree Committee got moved, looks like. Okay, anything, any questions about Wednesday or anything you want to have moved off consent? Joel thinks it's going to be a long meeting, he might be right. Prepare ahead of time. And then our next workshop is on the 12th, which is actually just next week because the 19th is a holiday. So next week, Urban Agency Renewal, as well as the non-URA Economic Development Grant Program, Urban Renewal Agency Grant Loan Programs and Riverside Caretaker Cottage, next Monday's workshop. All right. No questions? Do you have anything in general you want added to the agenda going forward? DJ?
Yeah, the last meeting we had with home builders was October. There was supposed to be a sort of a two month, you know, cadence to that, if you will. Notwithstanding reasons, we, we belated for good reason, but the meeting that we had today was supposed to have happened in December, so we've stretched that to kind of four months, right? But I'd like to request that maybe sometime in March, we can get them back in here to get back on sort of that expectation of every two months to address the list that they have. And then also just being mindful that, you know, council had determined that every two months was appropriate from, from then. So if you could find some time in March perhaps and get them back in the room.
Do we have a topic? Just pick something from the list that we discussed earlier or is there?
The association at this point is ready and waiting to, to know when the next meeting is and as far as identifying what is just simply not going to be a problem. And it will most likely be from that list of 22 items that council received.
Anything else? All right. Motion to adjourn today? DJ?
I move to adjourn.
Seconded by Rick. Thank you. All in favor of adjourned today, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. See you Wednesday night. Take a nap.